Thank you, Neil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no thing but clown behind you. I'd like to start off advising if we have anyone here for public audience. And we have Joan Coe here. You all have five minutes to speak.
Should I go to the table?
Sure.
Thank you. Joan Coe, at the March 11th, 2024 Board of Select meeting, I responded to comments made by Police Commissioner Mike Long that the choice, that the choice, in my opinion, for Chief Bolter was predetermined. As a response, I gave background on the politics involving the decision in order to justify my position. My remarks are based on fact. First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis interrupted my comments with a gavel, trying to limit my remarks. Wendy Maxtousis should not be the free speech police. According to Wendy Maxtousis, she was going to contact the ACLU to resolve the free speech issue at public audience. Presently, there has been no retraction of the rules of conduct to comply with the Constitution. When will First Selectman Wendy Maxtousis report her findings to the public? There's been much discussion on the allocation of funds and studies for recreation activities. Recreation has changed over the years with some sports in favor and others with the loss of interest. This requires the ability to pivot from one sport to another. Simsbury Farms has been the focal point for many of the sports supported by the public. Simsbury Farms pools should support all community swimming. The Memorial Pool should be demolished. To continue with the water component at the park, there should be a splash pad as an addition that would service many children in the summer months. To control the cost of the splash pad, there should be a meter that regulates the time and length of use and the water should be recycled. Memorial Park Skateboard area has lost the support of the community and is presently dangerous and in disrepair and should be removed. The town forest pond is tested for quality and is one of the hidden treasures in Simsbury. The area is a perfect spot for water activity with sandy beaches, shade under trees, and small play area. There should be a task force in the Recreation Department that reviews all recreational land and number of people participating in the sports. Outside agencies using our land for recreation capture the costs of maintenance. Now that pickleball has gained the popularity and tennis interests waning, lines have been added to the tennis court to accommodate the pickleball players. The Tennis Court, a terrible park, are being repurposed for pickleball. Recently, the Police Department contracted for staffing and scheduling study by Certus. They interviewed many employees and finalized a report with many positive recommendations that should be implemented. Chief Bolter has reached the maximum years of service in the Police Department and should retire. The retirement of Chief Bolter would give the Police Department an opportunity to hire a chief with new ideas and different management skills. Presently, the Board of Selectmen are reviewing the pension plan for non-union employees. Employees should be encouraged to retire, not encouraged to continue service to the town. We have had many chiefs managing the Police Department over the years, with each one supporting the community and managing the department with differing styles. Term limits gives the town an opportunity to promote from within or advertise for replacement. In a small department, there is little room for advancement. By encouraging retirement, there will be an opportunity for promotions, giving offices an opportunity for advancement. These opportunities are rare, and now having the opportunity through retirement, our officers will be well served. Many of the town residents have been impacted with the addition of affordable housing, increasing the population without proper planning for additional resources and infrastructure. The Affordable Housing Act has been developed by attorneys, lobbyists, and developers to increase their profits at the expense of towns through legislation. All these laws were passed without anyone aware of the unintended consequences. We need our appointed elected officials to advocate for the town when legislation is being hijacked to promote societal changes in the community. Affordable housing should be determined by market rates, not imposed by legislation. Now that the town has passed an ordinance prohibiting cannabis on town property, the town should have signage on Simsbury Meadows fencing, alerting the public to the audience. All tickets sold by the SPAC, the PAC, should have information pertaining to prohibition of cannabis on town property, and violations should have consequences. The town contract with the SPAC should be reviewed. The SPAC should pay for usage on Simsbury Meadows land and all costs associated with their programs. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch and Twitter at Joan Coe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan.
I need my sunglasses. Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 150 Curse Road. I wish I could be here talking about other things that have to do with town business, but I looked at the agenda, and so if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just go back down, a little walk down history and memory lane. As I say a few words tonight, I'm going to ask each of you to give some careful introspective thought as to why you specifically chose to run for the office which you now occupy. Was it for power? You wanted to be in control of the town? As for the elected volunteers, at least, I'm fairly certain it wasn't for the money. Or was it, as I suspect, to selflessly serve our community and your neighbors? We live in a glorious country like none other. Uniquely, our nation was founded and continues to exist nearly 250 years after its official independence by citizens not bound together by a common ancestry, race, or ethnicity, but by a heritage based on a shared understanding of a set of values, principles, and ideals. That common understanding has, as its very foundation, the belief that we are all equal, that no one or group holds a position superior to others. Unlike ruling classes around the world who are ordained by their bloodlines, the governance here in the United States was created based on the premise that we all, due to our mere existence, have a set of natural or God-given rights. We all have them equally. Our government, beginning with the Constitution, didn't give us our rights. The idea was that the government's role is to protect those rights above and beyond all else. The reason for the protection of rights and freedoms we were all born with was to prevent the very tyranny of royal rule that the American Revolution ended. The men that fought to secure our independence knew so well the dangers of not being allowed to speak freely, of being censored for differing points of view, that the very first right they enshrined was the freedom of speech, and indeed made it clear that it's not speech with which people agree that is protected. Rather, it is speech with which people disagree that must be protected at all costs, including and especially speech that people may find distasteful, offensive, obnoxious, rude, or insulting. The very viewpoints and disagreements that upset people said in angry or disagreeable ways are specifically what's protected. You don't have to like it, but you can't prohibit it. If not for government ferociously protecting our natural rights, we have no real country at all. If your answer to my earlier question is that you ran to serve a government not of royals and elites, but a government of the people, then your very first and most important act of service should be to preserve at all costs freedom of speech. It is not for you to determine what is or is not a civil tone, or whether someone has the right to choose to use one. We have three branches of government, and the determination as to whether someone is impugning the motive, character, or integrity of any individual is not for municipal board to adjudicate. There is a place for defamation grievances to be heard, and that's in a court of law, not here. There are a number of rules that have been adopted that are directly contradictory to the Constitution as well as to legal settlements the town has agreed to. But frankly, if you revisit the idea of protecting rights rather than ruling over people, you would scrap most of what you had crafted and concentrate on setting rules for the board and not for the people for whom you serve.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think there's anyone else here for public audience unless, Neil, you're here to speak to us. I'm gonna start my First Selectman's Report. I want to start with congratulations to the UConn Huskies going to the Sweet 16 on Thursday night, and I will give a shout out to the Simsbury High School Women's Basketball Team for their first state championship, which was last, what was it, on the?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Shoot. Thank you. My cake's done. Sorry. Okay, so there's that. The budget process is continuing. The next up will be the public hearing. I feel like I'm just talking to you guys. That was another timer. I had two timers. I think we're done here. Next up will be the public hearing on Wednesday, April 3rd, at Simsbury Public Library, and you'll hear from the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Ed, and we hope that you'll come out and speak and share your thoughts on the current budget. And there's potentially a round two for 416. Is that a done deal, the second public hearing, Amy? Or is it still?
It hasn't formally announced it.
Okay. Okay. And then the referendum will be in May. I have to give a couple shout outs to the Recycling Committee. The swap shop is opening April 6th, while they're permitting. Please bring in anything that you found in your attic or basement that you might want to contribute, that people might think are valuable. The Sustainability Committee, Kevin, you'll probably talk about this, but they're hosting the fair, or you probably have already, on May 4th. I'm not sure, I have the PDFs on the information, I'm not sure where they're posting them, but...
It's not the May yet, they're meeting later.
Where to post them? Okay, great. Early voting starts this week, tomorrow, is it tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday? They're not doing it on Good Friday, from 10:00 to 6:00 in the main meeting room. And that's all I have. There you go. Turn it over to you.
Thanks, and good evening, everybody. Just a couple things. You know, I'm very kind of happy to let everybody know what you already know, which is that tax collector Colleen O'Connor is retiring. Her last day is this Thursday, March 28th. What you may not know is she's been with the town for nearly 30 years, starting as a senior center clerk, tax clerk, and then finally as our tax collector. I want to thank her on behalf of all of the town employees and this board, of course, for her exemplary service over the years, and wish her a comfortable and well-deserved, happy retirement. I had occasion to meet her when I was the tax collector in Hartford, and I know how lucky Simsbury's been to have her serve in that role for so long. The Human Library event was Saturday, this past Saturday, March 23rd, organized by the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council. In the best sense of the word, the Human Library was a library of people and their experiences with prejudice. However, instead of paperback books, as you know, actual people were on loan for conversations, and we heard it was very well attended. The concept is about acknowledging and challenging the prejudice that we all carry towards one another, that implicit bias, if you will. For that reason, the Human Library creates a safe space for conversation where topics subject to taboo, marginalization, or stigmatization can be openly addressed without condemnation or judgment. The people acting as books have directly or indirectly been exposed to prejudice throughout their lives, bias or discrimination based on aspects of their person, heritage, or life experiences, and by all accounts, it was a wonderful event. From Public Works, I've been asked to share that this week, all of the public works, that's highway building, building and grounds, WPC Engineering and Administration, will take a refresher on CPR, and AED, and Stop to Bleed training. This custom first aid training is focused on the skills necessary to assist in medical emergencies during the initial and critical minutes before an... Of our work, our staff are the first on the scene, and for a number of medical emergencies, and we are committed as a department to be ready to respond. We're very proud of everyone at DPW and thank them for taking time to go through this training because it adds to the safety of our entire workforce and the community at large. And then lastly, just want to thank this board and the team here at Town Hall for their work on the budget. As the First Selectman said, it's a continuing process, but it's been a really good process, and I personally really appreciate the guidance and the conversations and dialogue that you all have had, and the engagement of this board has been fantastic. So thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm getting into the Selectman Liaison and Subcommittee Reports, and anything you want to report tonight, Curtis?
I don't have anything to report.
Steven?
I actually have a couple things. We have some positions open. The Zone Board of Appeals is one of my liaison, and we have a couple missing positions, and throughout the terms, we need people to volunteer and step forward if you're interested in helping our government, being part of the functioning and solution. And I encourage whoever to either go to the town website and/or your town committee, respective of your political affiliation, and to step forward because we need help. The other thing is the Historical Society is having a funding drive. They're attempting to have an executive director. You can Google Simsbury Historical Society and find out what they need, but it is a worthy cause, and it's something they feel will propel them into the future. So with that, on to...
Parks and Rec, this, oh, thank you. Parks and Rec, this Thursday is having their flashlight accon't at Simsbury Meadows. It starts at 6:30, goes till 8:30. It's broken down by age group, ages 2 to 5 is starting at 7:00 PM, and ages 6 to 12 is at 8:00 PM. It's a really fun event, and I encourage everybody to go. And the Aging and Disability Commission, we had a Century Friendly movie showing yesterday. It was very well attended at the library. We showed Luca, and it was a really fun time, and we're working on more events. Remember that we'll have our picnic in July, and our programming on loneliness and isolation in seniors and affecting their mental health will be a four-part series that we'll have more information on. And I think because public safety is meeting this Thursday, and Board of Ed is tomorrow, that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Cap?
I got to attend my first meeting of the Library Board last week because we finally didn't have a conflict there, and just want to appreciate them for allowing me to sit in and join the meeting and continue the collaboration there. As the town manager mentioned, the Human Library at last week was extremely well-intended. When I visited it, they had reported that there were some lines actually out the door and a waiting list to check out a book or talk, essentially have a conversation with a neighbor. We weren't able to, because of the restrictions on this project, announce the types of content that would be a part of the event, but some of the people who joined was somebody who was arrested during the Civil Rights Movement, somebody who is previously incarcerated, and a local Simsbury farmer. So some of these things were, I think, really good opportunities for residents to engage with one another and talk through some of the issues, and I could see some people having the dialogue too, so it wasn't just a one-way conversation. So I appreciate the leadership of the council for doing that. These kinds of things are a great part of being a community. We get into the doldrums on the board rightly so on some of the details, but these are the things that enrich an awesome community. And not one of my liaison appointments, but I wanted to mention that it's National Medal of Honor Day today. There's only 6,500 recipients of the Medal of Honor, only about 60 who are from Connecticut, and only two are living today. And so I'd encourage those, if you have a moment, to look through some of the citations on the National Medal of Honor website and review some of the amazing things that these heroes did on behalf of freedom in this nation. And one of the Connecticut recipients of the Medal of Honor who's living today dove on a grenade stuffed in the mud for his fellow Marines and lived to save many more. So I can't thank enough those that put the cause of freedom and their fellow service members ahead of themselves. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Well, thanks. That's interesting. Thanks. I was just gonna report on Personnel Subcommittee. We met last week, was it last? The time is going really fast. It's like I'm losing track of what day is what. We met last week on Thursday. We did discuss the pension change and the information that's in this packet, so we'll add a little more to that when we get to it. And we are getting ready to do the interviews for the Fair Rent Commission sometime in April, so anyone who's applied, you should be hearing from us as far scheduling goes. And you've mentioned public safety is this Thursday at 8:00 AM in this conference room, I believe. So with that, I will move on to the next item. The first thing I'd like to do is ask for a motion to amend the agenda to include Item G, which is the Capital Region Council of Governments that you have at your desk, because it's a timely issue. If somebody would like to make that motion...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so if that's at the end. And then I'd like to ask for a motion to include Item A and E, which is appointments on the, for the library, which are just removing one line to the pack, to the job description, and then appointments A through D to the consent agenda.
Only because I have a question on the library description. I don't think it's substantive, but it's a question.
Okay, sure, sure. So just A and A through D. Do you have a motion for those?
Could we consider adding the revisions to the Hometown Hero Program if everyone read it over? Or should we discuss that?
I was gonna discuss...
Then just leave it.
Yeah, just because I wanted to make sure people knew that it was coming, but we did talk about it. Oh, was that, where did we just talk about?
It's okay, we'll talk about it here. And then the new Item G, do we want to include that in the consent agenda or discuss it?
I just wanted to call it out in the meeting.
Then I am all for it.
You tried really hard to change the consent agenda.
So it's A plus A through D.
Yes. So all those in favor...
A and E, not through, right? Because we're still gonna go over fiscal year '24, '25 budget discussion?
Yeah, A...
And then A through D.
Got it. On the appointments, got it. Yes, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Did we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna get rid of the text. Oh, so we're gonna jump right in to the scheduling, the public hearing for the proposed amendments to the Town of Simsbury Retirement Income Plan. So I just wanted to provide a little context on this. So first of all, this is to schedule a public hearing, which would be at our April 15th meeting. There's a lot that went into this packet, and there's a lot to read for anybody in the public who wants to follow along with this, but this basically started to amend the pension plan, and it originally started with looking at the police chief, which also included the deputy as a class of people. And when a police officer hits a certain age and has met the requirements for the years of service, they can retire and move along. This was, there was a, the document in here from the 20th of February talks about, you know, retention and keeping leadership in place. So this packet first looked at making a pension plan change just for that group, and then it came to the Board of Selectmen in February, and the Board of Selectmen, in the March 19th letter, along with legal counsel, the Labor Council, thought that a better way to look at it and to be more fair and inclusive was to include, expand the classification from just the police to other leadership positions to allow that same retention benefit for getting an in-service distribution. From that, we included in here is the Milliman package, and it discusses the changes, the impact of the changes to the pension plan, and the basic outcome on that is the fiscal impact is not really known. It could be a positive fiscal impact, it could be a negative fiscal impact, dependent on when people retire and when people take that. So that's in here. The numbers, I'm just gonna say this because it's not highlighted, anything under 100% is good to the town, and anything over 100% in the charts on page...
Page three of the Milliman...
Page three of the Milliman letter would be a negative impact to the town. Also included in here is a resolution from the Police Commission, who originally initiated looking into this pension plan, and they included they're in favor of this. So they created a resolution to say that they feel that this is in the best interest of the town and our staff and our citizens. And so that is also something in here which is in favor, and also Mark, I think, included a letter that looks at this as a favorable thing. So we're putting this out to public, to the public for a hearing. The other thing I wanted to mention is it refers to, obviously, there's two amendments in here because this impacts two parts of the pension plan. One is Section Article 10, which is where the in-service distribution piece comes, and it's pages 39 and 40. And the other piece, I happen to be lucky to have a copy of the pension plan. Is that something we could attach to the, to the agenda for the hearing? So if anybody wants to know what these are referencing, they can see that. Because we talk about sections in the retirement plan, but they're not attached. So, and then the piece on Article 4 also refers to something in there on page 23. So the one clarification I do want to make for people coming to the public hearing is that there are actually two changes to the pension plan in here, that they're incorporated as one hearing, we will hear on both of them basically, as one change. It's not that they can't be separated, but they are done together here, but they do report to two different pieces of the pension plan. So those are my comments on that. I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but I just kind of wanted to lay some groundwork on what this hearing is about. And then I'll ask for a motion to, March effective 2024, to schedule a public hearing to receive public comment concerning proposed amendments to the Town of Simsbury Retirement Income Plan for 6:00 PM at the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on Monday, April 15th, 2024.
Some of...
Is there any discussion?
Actually, if I could.
Sure.
At what point can we pull out the 2% part from the pension availability, for lack of the proper term?
The distribution?
Right. Thank you.
Well, that's a question for Mark. Would, if, yeah, based on the hearing, is that something that could happen? Is that where you're...
Yeah, because if people want to speak to one but not the other, I think it might be easier to just have an identified, like when we have an agenda, things are labeled A and B or numerically, and I just think at some point we should have a differentiation between the two parts because they are independent of each other.
Absolutely. So one hearing, but people could speak about both or just one or the other. I think the, you know, the goal here was to not have to come back to the board multiple times with different changes. So while the initial effort was to bring you the option of authorizing an in-service distribution, once we were going down that path, we asked staff to look at, are there any other changes that we want to make so we don't have to go back, you know, three months, four months later? It seemed, you know, and in conversations with your, with the former interim town manager, that the change from 2.5 to 2 made sense, and so we threw that out there at this point. I think that, you know, once the board has acted on those two, hopefully we'll be done with reviewing this for some time, but they could be bifurcated, as the First Selectman indicated after the hearing. You could act on one, or both, or neither when the time comes, either after the public hearing or even at the following meeting, whatever your discretion is.
Okay, I just see one being more widely accepted and one having some discussions. So that's why I ask if we can, you know, break them out, but this works as well.
Yep.
Okay. And just for anybody who doesn't know what an in-service distribution is, I figured somebody might. It basically means that you've hit your pension, years of service, you needed years of service, and your contribution amount, I think, I think that might be wrong, and you're taking your pension while you're still working, basically is what you're doing. You met all the requirements. You no longer accrue your pension for salary once you start taking it, whereas if you stayed, when you leave, your salary would determine your pension payment. I just wanted to do that. So with that, all those in favor?
I just had one comment.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to mention, since we're talking about it, the police officer who joins at, say, 22 after they complete college would max out at 47, and I don't think that that's reasonable for modern environment. And I don't think that that's reasonable for modern environment, for somebody to consider retirement or being forced to leave town at the age of forty-seven. Now, the circumstances that we're talking about individually here are not that age, of course, but I think I would envision this entire package and what we're asking to consider is modernization of retirement for public employees. And it's not necessarily about retaining one individual, but giving the opportunity for somebody who's contributing well to town and has a significant amount of knowledge and understanding of the community at the senior executive level to be able to continue to contribute and not do so in a, in a way that personally penalizes them by reducing their overall compensation, of which retirement contributions are one of them. So I think that this is a good step for us to modernize our retirement. And anybody that's thinking about their own retirement would understand why this is important. So thanks, Wendy, for allowing me to contribute.
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you, Kevin. So, oh, so we're in discussion. So all those in favor of the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that will be on April fifteenth. Okay, the next item up is continued budget discussion. That's, so we had our public hearing. We had our public hearing last Tuesday. It also feels like a long time ago. The Board of Finance talked, they worked with Amy and they, we came up with a plan of how we want to schedule our CIP plan and CNR for bonding for traditional payback. So one of the outputs was to look at our bonding for ten, ten million dollars by annually implements, right? In order to stretch out the bond payments and the debt service, because we have the debt service issue. So there is a, there is a revised CIP and CNR that came out with the packet, which I will ask if there's questions on, but I wanted to see if Amy, Melissa, or any of Mark or Tom wanted to add any commentary to this.
Nothing really, other, other than generally, again, to, to repeat that the thanks to everybody that worked on this. Obviously, you know, in the process, Board of Finance gave everybody some, some really good guidance. Hats off to Amy and Melissa for working so diligently on some options that with bond counsel and others, I think, have given the town an opportunity to get some things done. But we do have a looming debt service issue, right? Up this year, for next year, one point one million in the short term. I think it is very important as the Board of Finance stress that we try to bail borrow as much as we can. It's gonna make for some tough choices on the capital side. Obviously, subject to review on an annual basis, you know, if we get better grantless growth. But I think the message of this whole budget cycle was, you know, very, very flat, grantless growth calls for tightening our belts. So other than that, I didn't have anything to add, but we've got the team here to answer any specific questions on this. Again, just remember that it's a plan, is, is, is a plan. And it's subject to discussions every year. And one thing I learned coming in and, and, and working with the team on this is that, as I suspected, lumping the capital plan with the operating budget is difficult, right? That's not how it's done everywhere. But, you know, it's, it's how it's done here. And it was a bit of a lift. So you're seeing staff's best effort to come back to you with a plan that meets the guidance from the Board of Finance, and we recommend passage. Thank you.
I was just gonna open up for questions. Diana?
Well, first of all, I just want to mention to clarify for those listening, we presented to the Board of Finance last week, the public hearing is April third. So, question though, is, we had for both the memorial pool redesign for that hundred and fifty thousand, as well as for the supplemental five hundred thousand for the Flower Bridge, we had put those in as, as reserves. You look like you're putting it back into bonding. Can you tell me why you are putting it back into bonding rather than through reserves? And how, does that, that does, does it have a, a material impact on, you know, passage through to the taxpayers?
No. So when I had come up with the three different scenarios for the Board of Finance, it considers a certain portion of reserves that we need in order to make the plan happen, happen. And we were already within the five million of bonding for fiscal year twenty-five, so I put those back to bonding and I kept those reserves that we needed in order to keep the debt service left in the out years.
Okay. And so we're, so we're, and we're within the guidance still putting those back to bonding? Okay. Because I just want to make sure that when I look at, you know, this year's for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six, if you add them up, they're slightly over the ten million dollar guidance that you're looking for. So is that something we need to look to adjust or?
No, so the two years that go together are gonna be the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
Those are the two years that need to be ten million and then the two years that need to be back.
Oh, and I see, so then it's twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Those, now that math adds up. Okay. Thank you for that.
You did that in your head that quickly?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to figure out a question?
Just, we had had some discussions before. Some items seem to be added back in, like the flooring, to cut to the chase. And it's bonded. So I guess I don't understand, and again, first term, in four months, like Mark, I'm a new guy. So maybe it's just a lack of understanding, but I don't understand, did the Board of Finance put that back in? Did you guys put it back in? Where'd it come from?
So the Board of Finance had allowed us that five million dollar cap. So when we presented to them, we told them that the guidance that was developed was in line with the town manager's budget. So we put it back in, and you guys are more than able to make any changes to take it back out. But the scenarios that we put into the budget were based on the town manager's budget. So you guys have another opportunity to go back and keep it or not keep it. And I think Melissa and Neil have some additional comments on the flooring as well. But it's just open for discussion.
Okay, because, you know, just to, to point it out, we did accept the flooring and remediation, not accept, we did put forward the flooring and remediation for the amphitheater. So it's not like we're not doing any flooring. We have, I think, a couple hundred thousand of flooring already in here, so this is actually above that, which just seems like we're really going all in on the floors. So I just, I look forward to hearing, you know, the, the reasoning behind it.
So in terms of flooring, two very distinct projects. So the project that was caught, the two fifty, was a district-wide. The two fifty was intended to be a district-wide recurring program. As you'll see, it's, it's every other year. Even with the increase that we're getting for the one-year, the one-time bump in CNR, the, the CNR funds on the board side are not gonna be enough to, to cover the floor, the flooring projects district-wide. So what those are, I think it's about three classrooms per school per year. That's what the two fifty would get us. That amphitheater flooring, that's a completely separate project, not tied into this particular project. So I guess we put it back, understanding that it helps, or it fits within the five million, but it would really go a long way. Again, there's no other funding source for that project for the, it's, I know Jason spoke to the CNR, but to be honest, when we go back and look, there's really, we can't squeeze it out of that CNR funding. So this was really an attempt to get that program up and going.
I understand, it's a frustration. We all have budgets, just like the town personally. So I understand, but please.
Yeah, from the school system side, it, it really is a high priority in terms of what our building principles in their process of asking come forward with every year. They have floor projects that they've been asking for, for a long time, that keep getting pushed. And we've had a lot of success with the other funds specifically for district infrastructure, for technology infrastructure and for security that have had regular programming in the capital that have been very successful over a period of time now. In addition, specifically with the amphitheater project, we have a little bit of concern with pricing on that one and whether we're completely, we've got a little bit of older pricing, so we don't wanna, you know, this kind of bumps up on, we'd love both to be in there. And, you know, Amy has told me that they fit within this five million cap that you've had, but really, putting the flooring back in is a priority for our administration.
Okay, for further clarification, though, we were just delaying it a year. We weren't saying never again. And just from, again, building my knowledge base, is part of this for remediation or is it just replacement?
For the amphitheater would require?
Right, but I meant the additional, like the annualized expenditure or semi-annual?
Uh, depends on the project.
Okay. I just was wondering if that was a diminishing expense or if it's gonna stay at that level.
So I, if anybody else has questions, but I wanted to jump on what you said. So, right, we had delayed it a couple years. And this is a question I asked Melissa when I first got this, in that, you know, we're putting, we, it wasn't made a priority when we voted on this, right? And now there's, there's a lot of unfunded projects in this list that we haven't weighed against the flooring to see, you know, which one may be more important. So I, I'm happy to leave it here, but what I want to ask Amy and Melissa is, after the public hearings, if we hear things, right, of the Board of Finance decides to change something, or if we hear things that are not in line with this, what is the ability for us to make changes to the, what we push forward? Is there one? Is there an ability?
I think it would be the Board of Finance changes.
So we would have to ask for the, I mean, if things came out of it, they could, could change what's in here?
Right.
Okay. Okay, because that's what I'm saying, if there is something that's a priority over that, you know, maybe we leave that out for two years. I, Kevin, did you have any questions? So just want to make sure I don't take the floor when other people are waiting.
Aye, aye. Appreciate that. The only, I guess, add on what, what Stephen is asking, some of the plan that you've created, it feels like it will be a little swish watch for us once we sort of conceive of what the plan will be, too many adjustments from that or deviating from that. It might be a challenge, but if we were to push it out by a year and stack the other, I think it's sixty thousand dollars or whatever for the, for the, for the flooring, what was the, what was the number on there?
Sixty thousand?
Yeah, sixty thousand. And we were to shift all those, you know, out by a year, does that impact negatively the remainder, you know, of the, of the overall plan? Or will that serve it if this is an issue that we're trying to address now? We're doing it every other year, right? So I was just asking if you shipped all of them by one year? If that's gonna impact the other cascading parts of the, of the plan?
I mean, theoretically, because something doesn't need it now, so happy you do it now as to we don't know if we'll have the ability later. I think based on the fact that the Board of Finance is willing to have you within the five million, it's, you know, is the flooring your priority or is it something else? No, I think the flooring could give up in the out years.
In all fairness, that was part of our discussion about the amphitheater and auditorium was the flooring. So it wasn't a standalone on the flooring, it was trying to absorb as much as we can into the budget. So, I mean, it wasn't just no to flooring, it was to be able to enable the amphitheater and auditorium.
Right.
That was part of our discussion. I'm not saying which way we should go. I'm just acknowledging it was not a standalone line item.
Well, we debated, you're saying we debated both of them, kind of?
Well, it's almost a, I don't want to call it a negotiation, but he said, we were led to believe it wasn't as important.
Yes.
As the other projects.
We were, that's true.
Wendy, were there ones in particular that you were wanting to discuss that weren't prioritized in, in this?
No, I actually, I actually just had a couple general questions. And changes that I suggested that I just wanted to mention. Well, the first question, to go back to Diana's question, we had, when we were looking at the eight fifty extra we were gonna use out of CNR's capital reserve, one of the, again, I asked Melissa, one of the logics for using cash for memorial pool redesign was, do we want to bond for something if we end up not approving it next year? So we're gonna bond for a hundred fifty thousand dollars to get a plan that we're gonna have to pay over ten years. And then if we decide not to do the plan, we're, we're paying for something that we didn't bond. And so that was a question I had as far as moving that back to bonding, whether there's a good answer to that, you know, or do we leave it and see if the Board of Finance moves it back? They probably won't because this, this kind of goes with the new CR, reserves and bonding and debt service, which honestly, we left to, with, to you guys, you know, Amy and the Board of Finance. But I just wanted to call that out. That was something that just.
Is it just philosophical?
Yeah.
We're, we're bonding to do a?
Study.
A study versus? I, I mean, I actually, I understand where you're coming from, and I kind of agreed when we had that meeting before, but at this point, it's probably just a cash management thing as much as it is anything.
Yeah, you're, you're right. I mean, it's.
Because if we move the shell, it's just the same.
I know, but it's hard to, right. So that's the other, that was one thing. I did ask to make sure that the, the senior center, even though we can't really afford it, and it, into the unfunded, just so we don't lose sight of it, because that was a priority of all of ours to put that in here. And then I did have a question, though, is something that I noticed on second revision is the, the PD room in the CNR budget. Why is that operating, why is that an operating transfer?
So it gets three vehicles. And she's booked that during the month.
Yeah.
So he's gonna purchase the vehicle and then he has that savings to.
For the room? Okay, so that's a good answer. Thank you. I, I somehow missed that answer. And then one other thing I just want to mention here is that.
Sorry, it was because we couldn't get them in time, is that what that was?
Right. So the past, the past purchase cycle, he couldn't get them in time, so by the time he got them, he caught up. So now we're, he's got these two this year.
But next time, they'll be three, right?
And right, they, I heard some, I remember someone asked that because it's still only, it's a one-time cost. Now I'm getting why they asked that question. I just must have missed it that night. And then the other thing, oh, I just wanted to mention that, so everything in, you know, unless the Board of Finance changes, right, after the hearing, whatever's in year twenty-five, twenty-six is gonna move up for our budget next year. But we do have an option to, we don't have to take everything that moves into, to that next year. So we will be revisiting it next year with our priorities, so what's on here? So I just want to put that out there.
I'll just say, and, sorry.
Go ahead.
It seems like to me, though, that some of our priorities set here is gonna really impactful downstream. That's kind of what I was mentioning, right? So when we start making our plan now, it's gonna be a lot more important than, I mean, it was always important. But I, I think that the overall load and what we decide to prioritize now is gonna really inform what we do. And it might end up giving us a little bit of less flexibility, too, but I don't think that it's a bad plan. I think that it does what this board and the Board of Finance wants us to accomplish in limiting the increase on the taxpayer and managing. Anyway, so that, that's my only thought. I, I, I agree that we'll definitely be able to address this again, but I don't think that it's gonna be a whole new, fresh look. I think we're gonna be pretty much set with what our priorities are.
True, true. Except maybe the flooring. No, kidding.
Or, or the overages on the Performing Arts Center.
True.
So what, actually, in, in, along that vein, is say, for example, we, this, we bond a hundred and fifty thousand for the, we're going to, for the memorial pool redesign, but the design plan actually costs a lot less than that. What happens now, because we bonded at full one fifty, but it, you know, designs may not come in at one fifty and they come in at seventy. What, what happens in that scenario?
So if I haven't bonded for it yet, and we can change funding or if we can do that, but assuming that I've bonded for it already, any of that savings from the bond proceeds will go back toward another bonded project to reduce your bonded project in the out year.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for a motion affected March twenty-fifth, twenty-two, to recommend the revised fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five capital improvement plan and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five capital non-recurring plan to the Board of Finance.
Second.
Is any further discussion?
I'm gonna make sure Steve's okay with the flooring.
I'm learning.
Is there any further discussion? Yeah, no, I know, it's a, it's a tough one, but, okay.
I think it's, it's gonna work through the system.
We'll see what the public says.
Exactly.
They might want new floors in three classrooms.
They might say four classrooms, who knows what's going on?
Right?
Maybe we will.
We want all new floors.
All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes and is going to the Board of Finance. Okay, the next item is a request from Selectman Kevin Beal, who wanted to discuss, or see if the board actually wanted to discuss further, bringing back up to the table the rules of procedure.
Yeah, thank you. And I, so there's not a motion on the table here that I'm asking for, but there might be at the end of the discussion, depending on how we, how we sit. And I know that Heather is not here, you know, either, but we've heard public comment. you know, either, but we've heard public comment, we've heard it tonight, on the rules of procedure, and the concerns about both the, the right of the public to redress grievances, you know, before this board and, and their government, and this, this board also has a responsibility to conduct the meetings in a way that's accessible and open for, for the public, and that includes probably making sure that it has the time to conduct its business, because we're doing the business of the town right now, but hearing public comment and limiting that is, is part of what we have to do, too. So my questions here were for the purposes of the discussion here, in case there were any changes that we wanted to make and what others' reactions are, and I respect a lot of the comment that occurred tonight from, from Lori and, and Joan in particular, and those are the, the crux of most of the feedback that, that I've heard. And I think that it's important that we, you know, enshrine the First Amendment and the right to support free speech, but I also know that there's certain appropriate limitations on time, place, and manner, and so sometimes the manner of speech is worth discussion. I don't think that necessarily, you know, impugning the motives necessarily, or whatever, is something that we can easily regulate. That's your job, Wendy, as first selectman, in, in chairing the meeting, that's a difficult job, for sure. But, for instance, we've seen charts or, or visual aids during meetings, too. Is that something that we would want to consider allowing to, to continue? The same thing if somebody had a PowerPoint presentation that they wanted during their five minutes in public comment, would that overall distract? So I'm, but my, my point in, in adding the, that part for discussion here is, I think that there is a certain limitation that's appropriate for us in conduct of this meeting, making sure that everybody knows that they have the ability to come before this body and before their government with their concerns, and that they won't be impugned for their, for their motives, for sure, but that comments being germane to the, to the topic at hand and what this board is discussing is important also. And I think that while rudeness or other things is not something that's, you know, necessarily easy to regulate, but the way that we conduct ourselves in an open meeting and the way that the public conducts themselves in an open meeting also allows for more people to, to add comment as well. If it were a rude, boisterous, aloud, and unwelcoming environment, whether it's public comment or the members of this board, it doesn't allow for others to participate in the same way. And so that's why we have a sense of decorum and understanding for how we conduct ourselves in public meeting. And I'd also like to say that the Board of Selectmen, and I think all of our, or many of our elected boards, have an email address where we can be contacted at length, that doesn't limit to five minutes. And there are lots of other public media where you can voice your opinion, and it would not be regulated by this board, what you say and how you want to say it. So I, I want to offer that here, knowing that it's not an easy job, and that it's also not easy for a member of the public to come and talk in a public meeting, but that we have a responsibility to parse those, too. The ability to come here and, and speak openly about something that's important to you, but also for this board to conduct meetings in an appropriate fair and, and legitimate way. So that's really my open for, for the discussion, if there's others that want to comment.
I would, if I could go.
Sure.
So one of, of our priorities, or goals, was the Town Charter. And I honestly believe this is something that should be addressed as part of the Town Charter. It would actually not come under our char, jurisdiction, it would indirectly, but the Town Charter would make recommend, Town Charter Committee would make recommendations to us. We could charge them with pursuing this, but I'm hoping we are way overdue, in my opinion, for the Town Charter revision. We're out almost eight years since we've addressed this, and I think because that is imminent, and it has become one of our priorities, that we should really push that forward and fold this into it, because any Band-Aid would be a Band-Aid for a number of months at this point, maybe almost 12 months, but still a number of months. This is a hot on topic, I trust, you know, I agree with you there. It's free speech, I applaud that you mentioned that we only look over our meeting. We don't look over someone's ability to speak out. We do have limits and constraints, and I understand why you brought this up, to be quite frank. It is sort of a grayish area, but to circle back, I think that the Town Charter is actually what I'd like to push forward and get this folded into it as an additional catalyst to expedite that. So that, that's my
So the rules, the rules basically go into the charter, right? The rules of procedure become part of an ordinance within the charter, because we had to do a public hearing on this. So if, if you go to the charter, isn't it in the code somewhere?
It's in the code, but you didn't do a public hearing, you approved it at your
Yeah, I know, no, I, I'm just asking to relate back to the charter discussion for Steve.
I'm still learning.
So, so it is in the code, but is a, I guess it, we, we, we do it every two years, right? That's the normal path, do it every two years. We, last time we revisited it, we had a work group, but technically, in the organizational meeting, we would have pushed it to the Board of, to the Personnel Subcommittee, which is where it was pushed then. So that would be if we wanted to do something. I do think it could be part of the charter in, in respect to amount of time for people to discuss things, because our charter has it at five minutes, so that would be a change to the charter if we wanted to reduce the amount of time people speak. So that would go to that, and also whether or not you have public audience or not, our charter gives the public the option to, for free speech, which I don't plan to take away, but that is where that is, that right is, is provided. So I, I don't know where, like, I don't know what I'm saying. I, I'm, I'm okay with this as it is, I know it's not totally functional, but I don't think that it's going to become any more functional with any changes, because unless people respond to the, the manner which we ask for in the decorum statement, I, I don't see how we're going to stop people from participating. I, I do want to make a couple of comments, just because they were made in, in public audience today. I have tried to reach the ACLU multiple times to validate what was put into that press article. I've reached out to the attorney, because I wanted to make sure the context was fully shared, and it is not easy to get in touch with anybody at the ACLU, I will just say that. So I don't know how the reporter got in touch with the ACLU, but I cannot get in touch with the ACLU.
If you kick somebody out, they might show up.
Oh, maybe. Yeah, so, and then another point, too, again, is that the, the Roberts Rules, Roberts Rules, our, we, our guide, is that in meetings of many public bodies, we can have people not members of the meeting, who, who normally who do not have a right to participate. Some bodies, especially public ones, may invite non-members to express their views, but this is done under the control of the presiding officer, subject to relevant rules adopted by the body and subject to appeal by a member. So it is here that there is really nothing wrong with our decorum statement that we currently have in place. And if we do want to visit some of these things at the charter, I think we can, can do that, but is, is anybody interested in moving this forward for further discussion, I guess, is the question?
Well, I, I do want to, the only thing I would like to say is, in my viewpoint, is I, under no circum, you know, no circumstances in any way, shape, or form, would attempt or view this, or trying to view this as curtailing anybody's freedom of speech. Or am I looking to only have people come and speak who I agree with or say things that I agree with? I, I think very strongly that public discourse is important in, in, to our process and, and freedom of speech and having opposing viewpoints and hearing from the public is important for us to do our job and do it well. You know, I looked at these as a way of decorum for everybody that's in this room, for myself included. Like this, the decorum statement, you know, it is something that I'm supposed to follow, and Mark is supposed to follow, Tom is supposed to follow, and each one of us is supposed to follow. And, I mean, maybe it's just, you know, my own personal beliefs, but you know, I, I, uh, there, there is something to, you know, someone who is being disruptive, and then to Kevin's point, you know, we, I think the only question we have is how disruptive are, or, um, when you have like some visual aids and stuff, they're not here for a presentation. And, you know, I, I just, so there are things that may be uncomfortable, and that's, you know, maybe, whatever, that's, that's my own personal viewpoint. And, and we are not a court of law, but I, you know, I don't know where we go with this, and I don't know how to make changes to have any improvement at this point.
I, I think the work that Lori and Joan do is, it's great. I, I learned from the, the research, the time that you guys put into your, your presentations. I wouldn't want to limit you, but the one problem I have is that there's no way to fact-check anything that's said, so someone could say something that's totally not true, and we can't respond to it. But, I mean, it is your free speech to, to be able to speak, but I, I don't think that the timing is, is a large issue as far as reducing it from five minutes. Usually, we don't get the 20 minutes, it's usually just our T and ladies that, that come to present for us. So, you know, they're within the 20-minute time period, and it is hard to police what people say. But you do have the right to say what you want to say.
Well, in, in some, I mean, we've looked at other towns that do have limits just as far as the, what is the, the three words, something, something, and manner?
Time, time, place, and manner.
Time, place, and manner.
So the amount of time, the time of the meeting, the amount of time you can speak, where
The manner.
And all that, and the, the manner of speech. And I think that the manner of speech is probably the grayest, you know, area, and the manner, I think, has to do with both manners and the way you comport yourself in the meeting. No shirt, no shoes, no service, right? So the way you comport yourself in a, in a public meeting needs to respect the body that you're, you're speaking before and the, the citizens, the citizenry that it represents. And it's not about kissing a ring when you come before a board like this, it's about establishing a minimum set of expectations for all public participants, whether or not they agree or disagree. And I don't think that it's an easy thing at all, and I know this is a longer answer than what you were asking for there, too, but I do think it's important for us to make sure that we continue to consider it, because as Curtis said, if somebody were to talk about another resident here in the meeting and they weren't able to defend themselves, that doesn't seem right or fair either. And so I think that as part of this group, we can only encourage sometime that, that others are aware of their surroundings and what their, the results of their comments and those consequences, you know, would be. But they have a right to come, you know, here and, and speak here, but we do have some ability and tools here. For instance, like I mentioned, the visual aids or other things that we think might promote a, a more fair and easily heard public comment period, so that's all.
So, my question to you, Kevin, then, is you, you wanted to bring this up. Do you have a solution on how we move forward with this? Or, you know, it is, did you just wanted to have kind of an organic discussion about it? Or were, did you have some recommendations?
I don't think we need to take this, you know, meeting all night and, and take over our entirety, that wasn't my intent, but I think that it is absolutely fair for the residents who have come here and said that they have a problem with our rules and procedure. For us, like Curtis said, we weren't able to talk about it, for us to have that discussion and say, here's why we think that it comports with the First Amendment and why we're supporting your individual right to free speech, and here's all the avenues that you have to redress grievances before this board, including via direct message, that can, something can get put into an agenda. There's a public comment period, it just has time, place, and manner restrictions on that, and that's here clearly in black and white in the rules of procedure, et cetera. And that also governs us, we, we've talked about this, and, and I don't need to, you know, take a, a scab off here, but there was a meeting where a couple of folks left in the middle of the meeting, right? If we're gonna do that, we should ask for a recess and then leave the meeting, and then reconvene the meeting when we come back. Right, there's this way that we respect each other as a member of this board, and the way that we respect the public when they, when they come here. So those are my, my thoughts and my reasons, and I'm happy to end the discussion if others are, are done with it, knowing that we haven't heard from Heather on it necessarily, but I think that she doesn't necessarily disagree with anything that we've said tonight.
I have a quick question.
I was gonna stop, I was gonna move on, but go ahead.
No, it's just a question, it's not really a discussion point. If someone writes in, you know how it's reply-all, selectmen, is that part of the agenda packet that's online, or is that just to us?
It's just to us.
Just to you.
Other, other groups publish them with their minutes, I believe.
Okay, like I said, it was just a clarification, thank you, Kevin.
It's a matter of the public record, if somebody wanted to
Oh, they could ask for it, yeah, that's, that's what it meant, public record, thank you, okay.
And you can CC the Hartford Current on your note to the Board of Selectmen, too, and just point that out there, that it doesn't restrict your ability to speak or have an opinion, either.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna move on from this, I'm gonna make one more comment for the public that we did look last year in the old board, to, in South Park work group, to change this, to avoid some of the, to keep the meetings more positive upfront and make sure that the public audience upfront apply to the agenda, and to move the other discussion to the end of the meeting. And the board, we decided not to include that, because we didn't want to shut down any conversation from people that did not want to sit through the whole meeting to tell us about an event or, you know, a crease or something like that. We felt like that was limiting people's free speech, and so I feel like we allowed this and made this change for decorum in order to accommodate everybody at the beginning of the meeting. And, um, so that was an option, and it could always be revisited. I was not in favor of that, but it is an option. So on that note, I'm gonna, gonna move on, okay? So we're on the proposed updates to the library job descriptions. So Kevin, I wanted to, who wants to give the descri, description on this? I could, but I might let someone else talk, because I'm tired of talking. How about you, Mark or Tom? Actually, well, I just want to, my note will be that this came to public, not public, the Personnel Subcommittee, and it was a very generic change, and Tom, I'll let you talk about it.
Yeah, so this was, uh, the library director, there's three division heads, the head of Borrowing and Technical Services, the head of Adult Services, and the head of Children's Services. With one of them currently being open and one being sort of on an acting role, the library director looked at the job descriptions for any potential revisions before posting one or both of the positions. And there's this one little sentence in them about who becomes the acting head of the library in the library director's absence. And it was, the head of Adult Services would become the acting head, and then the others have kind of fallen behind that. So removing this one sentence from each of them allows the library director to choose based on, from three department, or division heads, based on a, a number of criteria. It could be seniority, it could be experience in all their jobs.
Just, and one other thing, we did ask in the meeting if other job descriptions had a succession plan built into the job description, and they did not.
So for the, the revision we did for the tax assessor's office, they have to serve as the assessor.
Okay.
The assistant assessor has that in there.
Is it because of certification or?
I think it has to do with the fact that somebody that's certified to sign it or something, I don't remember all the details. I did ask a question, I could speak intelligently on it several months ago, but
And it's over my head by now, so
So my, the reason why I asked the question is, there's nothing in there, it says may. Is that gonna be an, an issue for the union that something's not in somebody's job description, that they may be asked to serve in the absence of the director? And is a change to classification, that seems like a substantive change for me. If you're expected to serve as the director in a role, that, that seems like it's a level of responsibility that would be above your department head role.
So all of the, the three division heads are all the same A5 in the Supervisors Union, so they're, they're currently as listed at the same grade.
And the other ones don't have it in there, just this one happened, too?
So the other ones have, like, the head of Borrowing is responsible for library operations, and the absence of the director, the head of Adult Services, and the head of Children's.
So all three have the same
All of them have it in some order, but the current job services have what that order is, and the library director, which is like it, have to her be one to choose.
Is there, is there a reasoning why that initial language was in there to begin with? Like, is there a reason why that was the succession plan?
It's a great question, one that I don't, I, I don't know the last time these were updated. And it could be just based on of a seniority, you know, who was in position at the time, but I don't.
And is there a reason that the library, the head, uh, And is there a reason that the library, the head, the director wants it changed to her discretion at this point?
So right now, it allows a seniority. So our current, only one of the division heads is currently filling out our head of children's services. So if you keep it as is, that position is kind of second to an adult services. That person that's head of adult services right now is in an acting role kind of bumped up while we're doing that kind of procedure. And then the head of borrowing, technical recruiting for a new person. So they might only have two months on the job where the head of children's might have five or six. And that head of borrowing might be become the acting head of the library for a new person to be in here.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions on that? Okay, I'm looking for a motion effective March 25th, 2024, to approve the updated job descriptions for the head of borrowing and technical services, head of adult services, and head of children's services as presented.
So moved.
Second, any more discussion?
I would just feel more comfortable if it included it in the list of additional duties that they may be asked to serve as the director. And if that's a friendly amendment for this, it just, I don't know, I just, everybody's been in those circumstances and, you know, asking somebody to do something outside of their job description, especially something substantive of that.
Yeah, and in the union, is...
That's exactly.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's a really good point, so.
So under the additional duties, I would offer some language that says that they may be responsible at the library director's discretion to serve as a director in their absence. Yes, as long as it's a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, I forgot it, I wasn't sure I heard the, you say the friendly amendment wording.
That means we don't have to redo a vote on this and then, okay.
Okay, so, all those in favor with the friendly amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now here...
Even me, wow.
I don't want to talk louder. And now I'm going to move to the proposed revision to the Hometown Hero program that Stephen didn't want us to talk about tonight.
It's not that I didn't want to.
Sorry, I just needed some, I need some levity here.
All right. Sorry.
So the Hometown Hero program, we met, when did we meet? Last month, this month?
Last month.
Last month, see, it just flew right by. Because last year, the question came up when they were done about appointing somebody who has done, you know, great work for the town but was on a boarding commission but did the work for the town in another vein. So that's why this is being amended, so that you could nominate somebody to Hometown Hero. And the Hometown Hero, what do you think, you want to get nominated for something?
That's an unfriendly amendment.
I was unmute, so.
Okay, well, we heard you. So before I ask, Tom, when will we start advertising for Hometown Heroes?
So currently, I'm updating the form from last year, it has these, but I'm planning on on April 1st to April 29th.
Okay, great.
And we'll do our social media and news announcement, all our different apps.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if there's no, I'm going to ask for a motion effective March 25th, 2024, to adopt the proposed Hometown Hero program guidelines as presented.
So moved.
I'll second, and then I have a question.
All right, wait, is there a discussion?
Yes, discussion, well, I already seconded it, so it's on the table.
Yeah, well, don't you have to say, is there any discussion?
It says in, under item, I guess it's E or D, there's cross, it's in blue. A nominee may not be a member of town staff, sorry, Tom, we would support. Nor sitting elected official of have benefited economically. I think it's just some wordsmithing that needs to be done before it's final, final. Conceptually, I don't have any issues.
Okay. So with those corrections, can...
Nor sitting elected official...
Or, instead of of.
Have benefited economically. So I would do the Oxford comment there too.
So with the changes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have to raise your hand, that's the, no, sorry.
I had that.
Huh?
Keep going.
Wait, what did you say?
I had that, I just forgot it. Good discussion.
Okay, all right, so wait, oh, now we're on this item, the CROG item. Bye, Amy. So Capital Region Council of Governments, you didn't include my whole blurb in here, my link. Did I send that? Oh, you did include some of it. Well, I actually sent a link to CROG, sorry, sorry, anybody who's watching. There's a policy board is made up of chief elected officials. And each of the chief elected officials, most have their town managers as their, what did I call it? Their alternates because they really discuss a lot of legislation and things like that that impact the town. So in order to have Mark sit in and be a voting member when I'm not there, this is needed by CROG.
Is it normally like the town manager or city administrator or something?
Yeah, everybody, for most, I went and looked through the list, that's why I had the list link, I'll send it to you.
We've got a very capable deputy for a selectman here and I just want to...
We do, and that's, there is a question on, do you want, yeah, he would love this. Do you want to have an elected official or not? But I went back and I looked through and most of them have appointed the town managers. And actually, a lot of the town managers do go to the meetings because a lot of the discussion is more, a lot of times it's administrative. So it's kind of a cross in between who's there, it's really good if both go. So I'm hoping that Mark will start going. I'm going to miss the one this week because I'm going away for my anniversary. But I hope that Mark starts going so that the both of us could sit there and talk about what we've heard because that would make it really beneficial to the community. Right? So I'm going to ask for a motion effective March 25th, 2024, to appoint town manager Mark Nelson as the alternate to the Capital Region Council of Governments' Policy Board.
Some of...
Any further discussion?
Even though I like him a lot, we'll send him.
Send him. Happy to do it.
Mark, did you do this in Poughkeepsie?
It wasn't CROG, but it was Nikon, but yes, you know, and I love to participate in it. As Wendy said, it's some really good vibrant discussions. Some of them are policy, others are our administration, administrative, but, you know, things like grants and, you know, working together. Regionalization is a big important one. So, you know, I did go, I've gone to, I think, two so far, but yeah, it's interesting.
The other group is CCM, is another group that a lot of times put the town manager in the first line of, because there's a lot of cross difference. So this is on the table, all those in favor?
I'll just say the regionalization buzzword that you mentioned, I would say the sharing and pooling of resources. I would emphasize that as opposed to, this isn't a regionalization.
Yes, and you were in a, you were, Andy, county government, we do not have county government.
I get it.
We have CROGS. And there is a lot of shared services, but nobody mentions that word. So let's vote for this now, those in favor. Okay, so that passes. Okay, so next up, hold on. I'm going to ask, I'm going to move, ask for a motion to accept the meeting minutes for March 9th from the budget workshop.
For the minutes of March 9th.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There's a lot of minutes to read, it's my discussion. Any discussion on that? Okay, so no discussion, all those in favor of the March 9th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to move to accept the March 11th minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of March 11th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Third.
It's just a typo.
I have a discussion.
Appointments and resignations, I think it's Amy McLean-Saul's, right? And it just says Sully.
Really? I didn't catch that.
You have to read closely, Stephen.
Give me my glasses.
It's just a minor typo, it doesn't matter, it's just a name. Actually, it does matter.
Okay, so I have a couple corrections in here. So the first thing, and I'm not sure if, I guess I should validate what Ms. Getz said, but it said the public meeting is on March 20th, 2024, it's on March 28th, 2024. On page two. And then, I know I may have made this confusing during the meeting, but on page four, page four, where is it, I'm going to find it. When we talked about the Main Street Partnership, so Mr. Beal put the motion to flat fund this. Diana seconded it, I thought I was, I did not actually amend the motion to 75... And then it says after discussion, we approved it. There was no motion on the table for $75,000, we just, we failed to pass the flat funding. So I might have...
A friendly amendment failed, right? You just want, do you want that on the record? Because we could just strike the whole sentence since it didn't happen.
No, because I don't even know if I actually, I think I was told I wasn't supposed to make the motion or I said if anybody wanted, so yeah, I wanted stricken.
Okay.
We just flat funded, voted to flat fund it, it failed, that's the result of it, and that's what happened. Okay, I think that was all I had.
I have one minor change and it's going to sound ridiculous. However, early on, under the committee reports, subcommittee reports, and liaison reports for the aging and disability, Super Thursday is actually S-O-U-P as in soup. Soup. Super. We serve soup and sandwich, S-O-U-P-E-R, Super Thursday.
I think that's a good catch there.
Very good catch.
I think it should be Super Duper Thursday.
Wait, how would you spell Duper?
That's actually a point for discussion.
First name, it's D-O-O-P-E-R.
Okay, did we vote? No, we didn't vote yet, so let's vote, all in favor of the minutes as adjusted, amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. And I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Curtis, you can make it.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.